Evening Cold Spring, September 21st, workshop of the Board of Trustees. Everyone in? Okay, just start out first, I'm trustee star, but could you let us know what the extraordinary circumstances that doesn't allow you to be in session this evening?
Um, I'm just feeling under the weather and I didn't want to expose anyone to whatever's getting me, I'm sorry.
Thank you for that consideration. Okay. Opportunity request to vote or modify agenda items and emotions? Right into the meat of it. So. We have a planning, a joint session with the planning board next Wednesday. Tonight, the primary topic of our workshop is sort of thinking through how that will go. Laura, trustee Bozey and I met with. The planning board chair and member Daniels, who's been sort of taken, taken the lead and communicating with your trail. The clerk, the board secretary and the village attorney last week. Sort of plan out how that meeting might go and my intention tonight is to help us both center ourselves on process and think about. How that meeting will, will roll and how we prepare for it. So I'm going to read a little bit because there is a lot of detail and I want to make sure I have all of the. Detail of facts right for the discussion. So if you'll buckle up. I'll read in. Um, so just to frame it out again, I know we've heard this, we've heard this lots, I'm going to do this in a very short way. Because there are a lot of moving parts. If your trail is a big, is a big complicated project. With lots of moving parts. So just one more time as we think about how we've gotten to where we are. So. The community has been having discussions about managing breakneck trail and other tourists for years and back in beginning in 2014. Under the leadership of scenic Hudson, concept development for a trail system that was accessible, safe and offered rationalized management along the breakneck corridor began. Cold Spring and Phillips Town participated with representatives on a steering committee and I know Catherine attended a bunch of those meetings, I attended a bunch. But the village was represented by former mayor Mirandi and on the steering committee and Phillips Town was represented by former supervisor Richard Shea. There were, they said lots of public presentations and there were comments taken on those preliminary plans. And the result was the preliminary draft master plan for the fewer trailing, which was published in May 2015. It identified a preliminary trail alignment and that would connect Cold Spring and Beacon and at that time. Fair Street was a considered corridor as was nine D. Those were the alternatives for moving visitors from the village to the trailhead. There was also. Consideration for a hot minute of going along the railroad tracks, but we all know there's overhanging rock ledge, et cetera. So that was eliminated through that process. So. The draft master plan. Review was required under the state environmental or is required under the state. Environmental Quality Review Act. New York State declared itself a lead agency and completed an environmental assessment form, which is sort of an inventory of questions. We do these when we. Make secret determinations about impacts. They declared a positive declaration for the draft plan and that meant that additional environmental review would be required in the form of a general environmental impact statement. In 2016, a scoping document, a draft scoping document for that additional review was circulated. And that it would serve as the format or the outline for the GEIS and that outline was adopted in March 2017. Among the things that a scoping document, a GIA scoping document considers is identifying the elements that will be. That will be considered in the environmental review going forward. So. In that scoping document, we as a village are identified as an interested party for the GEIS review, meaning that we will have comment. On the GEIS, but no permitting authority for the project. The only approval that the scoping document identifies for the village in fact is a quote resolution of support. Endorsing the final master plan and final GEIS. But then some important elements shifted. During the development of the scoping document, the breakneck connector, that bridge that's to go from Stony Point over the tracks and up to the trailhead. Was pulled out. As a, as a separate, for a separate environmental review was determined to have independent utility and pulled out. The lead agency for that portion was the town of Fishkill. Which is an interested agency in the larger project and was identified as lead agency for that piece. The town of Fishkill declared a negative impact for the connector, meaning that no further environmental review was required for that critical element of the trail. And part of that is because the. The, some of the infrastructure for the aqueduct, for the Catskill aqueduct. That needs to be accessed, has no other way to access and the connector will provide that access and that was one of the elements that was considered. In sort of green lighting that portion first. And then in February 2020, the master plan for the pure trail was revised and some major changes were incorporated into the project. The linear pedestrian park along the waterfront near Breakfunt, but it breakneck and also a new route. Through the village and that's via dockside. So that means that the village, there will be visitors coming through the village in ways that the scoping documents that laid out the shape for the EIS. Didn't anticipate and that. Creates potential impacts that weren't anticipated. We don't yet have a sense, we've not seen any preliminaries of this, we don't get to see preliminaries of the, of the draft. So we don't yet have a sense of how those impacts will be addressed in the environmental impact statement. Some of them, it's important to recognize have the potential to be good and some of them have the potential to be detrimental. There are lots of great opportunities for residents to benefit from the trail. There are also a great many opportunities for negative impacts like traffic and overcrowding and we need to be thinking about them. So the village's current capacity as an interested party to the EIS limits our ability to influence outcomes ultimately. The draft document is expected to be released sometime this fall. I did speak with MJ Martin today or had an exchange with her today. They hope to have it a timeline for when it will, will be released by our meeting next week. So we have a better sense of timeline. But we don't know yet. And because the, the impact that we can have as an interested agency is limited, we have to make sure that then we do comment on the, the D. The GEIS, all the acronyms, the GEIS, that our comments are well considered and they're most likely to ensure positive outcomes for the village. So when that. When that environmental impact statement is released in its draft form, there will be a 30 day window for comment. And we need to be ready. So we need to start working with the known knowns. One is that the village is an interested agency and the village will need to respond on behalf of the whole village, the village board. Two, we want and need the advice and guidance of our land use boards, planning board, the ZBA, the HDRB. We want to hear from residents, the people to whom we as elected officials are accountable. And we want to ensure that the public is as well informed and has as many opportunities for participation as possible. So we as a body began the process of seeking planning board guidance in late July. When we referred to them questions that several of us had related to. A topic subset that's under consideration by the pure trail, the parking and shutting shuttle study. It's being conducted by the fewer tell team concurrently and in support of the development of the GEIS sort of a. At the same time and off to the side. And last week. I mentioned that we met with. Jack and Yasmin from the, from the planning board and we sort of. Laid out an initial plan for our joint session. We established as a goal. To lay out a roadmap with the planning board for how we will continue to prepare for and then conduct our response to the GEIS. So in that session, we talked through, we, we will, when we're together, talk about how we will identify issues of concern. What the likely primary topics will be for us as individual bodies and overall. How we will collect and consolidate input from the land use boards. How we will collect and consolidate input from our first responders and how we'll collect and consolidate input from the public. So for next week. With this introduction, please review the scoping document. For the DG. I F, I did send a link to it, but if you don't see it, I can send it again. This is what it looks like. It's on the, the New York State Parks website under Fuhr Trail. And familiar site, familiarize yourselves with the topics. That are in the document and how they're likely to be addressed in the GEIS, given the framing of the document, remember the. That it's still, that is still following. As far as we know, we, we don't know how they will be considering. The village trail. So have it in mind, go ahead.
The one that's on the breakneck connector or.
This is, this is for the whole project, the breakneck connector went down a separate track because it had a negative declaration. So it did not go on to. An environmental impact statement.
Yeah.
This is for the project generally. And it includes elements of, I assume it includes elements of the connector trail, but it's the whole project, including down into. We don't know yet how it will include dockside. We get to see how it includes areas in the village. So yeah, familiarize, familiarize yourselves with that and the layout. The topics. That you'll. There, there are a number of topics, but once you'll probably want to pay particular attention to our traffic and transportation. Infrastructure, excuse me, where I kicked. Emergency services, recreation and open space resources, historic and archaeological resources. And then anticipate areas of concern that you have within that framework and outline. And think about how this provides route through dockside will benefit and impact the village. So bring all that with you to our session with the planning board next week. We'll be here in the large meeting room and we'll be live on Zoom starting at seven. Based on feedback you have tonight, I'll draft an agenda. And give it to the planning board to review in their own planning session. They're doing what we're doing tonight, tomorrow night. And then we'll circulate it to the trustees and the public. I do intend for there to, to open the floor for public comment after board discussion next week if village residents want to bring particular concerns to our attention. At this preliminary stage. Seeker, seeker is super important and the framing of the environmental impact statement will determine the impacts that will be mitigated. As the fewer trails developed. So how we prepare for receiving the document and then respond to it. Will lay equally important groundwork for the future and how as the interested party, along with our constituent land use boards and residents. Work with the pure trail planners. I think it's, we want to work positively and productively and in partnership. It's, it's happening as we. Are beginning to see with the. The subset areas, the parking and shuttle committee. And they have, I will say that, that fear trail folks have been responsive to our request that the discussions happening in, in committee session and by committee. I, I mean, a collection of elected representatives from. Constituent municipalities, Fishkill, Beacon, Phillips Town, Cold Spring. That the work of those committees be brought to the public. In a, in a, in a more formal way as part of a presentation and they agreed to do that in October. So I'm hoping that that's. What we will see as we go forward. They break out a topic area, meet with the working group, get feedback, take it to the public, get feedback, make modifications. That's my hope. So after all that reading. Any thoughts for our, for that framework for our meeting next week with the planning board?
One kind of sort of general. Thought is, you know, this, this project has been. Around. And in conversation with various boards with. Various. Committees. And I guess what I would hope and would like is that, you know, our meeting next week is like not a rehashing of our list of grievances. And issues, but instead like actual. Productive conversation because we ultimately don't have, this is kind of our one chance at the apple and we don't have any. Actual. Legislative say or a way of, of. Being involved past this point. So I just hope that, you know, for all, for all of us, the, the, the planning board as well, that we have like a productive conversation and that people who participate from the. From the community don't, you know, bring. Ways of, of making this plan as best as we can.
Versus.
Yeah, versus. The. Other just whining about all the ways which we hate it and. The pain of the process thus far.
One of the things that. That I hope that we can talk about. Without going into too much detail tonight, there is a section on. Land use and zoning. In the, in the EIS and it does reference. Foundational documents in each municipality that comprehensive plans, local waterfront revitalization plans, et cetera. Now that there is a shift and there is engagement with the building, you're not, you have to walk through the village to get to dockside. And, and there should be no, there should be no mistake. I mean, for a while Parks was saying, no, no, don't, don't, don't think about Doc, don't think about pure trail there. At dockside while you're, while we're doing the shoreline stabilization, it's not about, it's not about dockside. It is. And I, as I'll, I'll tell you in a summary in just a bit from my meeting at dockside yesterday, that the landscape architect. And the engineer for the dockside shoreline stabilization project were openly referring to it as the dockside connector. So it's, it's not. It's not a secret. To get to that connector, you have to pass through village streets and village neighborhoods. And with that shift, I think it's important that we advocate for. The balancing test under seeker that, that demonstrates that. The, the, the good of the project outweighs or potentially outweighs the value of local land use reviews. And I think the bar for that's. I'm hoping that the bar for that will be high. Given the impact. So that's one of, that's one of the. Modifications I hope we will be able to see or, or bring forward is the actual balancing test under secret.
Um, well, I guess I'm trying, I'm still trying to think through what we. How we can most effectively use that time next week, given that we don't, we can't actually start. Right.
We don't have the document.
On the document, right.
So, but thinking, but.
I mean, I hear your point of thinking through, like here are the people that we want to engage, what's our process for doing that? Who's doing what? I know that. The planning board really wants to better understand who. The responsibilities of each.
Yeah.
Of each board and. And. You know, they lay out nicely and their question document, the references and the code that relate to their. Why that issue is within their planning. Review. So that was helpful for me for thinking about, okay, like they, you know, they have a, a real.
A basis.
A bit, yeah, a basis for, for. For providing feedback.
You could come in, it's a public meeting, come in. Oh, okay.
But I am. Yeah, I guess I still haven't.
Well, I think part of it is going to be getting a timeline of saying, okay, let's imagine 30 days back.
Yeah.
If, if that's the window of time we have, what's the actual process going to be to say HDRB? What are your thoughts?
Yeah.
You, you need to digest and give us that. How are we then going to take the, the boards, different boards comments and consolidate them? How are you going to consolidate public comment and with that, I think it's going to be a scramble in that timeline.
Yeah, and maybe also. I'm thinking of that, you know, some of the. You had mentioned maybe emergency personnel, trying to think through, are there any groups that we want feedback from that know nothing about this and maybe we need to do some kind of primer with them before the 30 days so that they could comment. Think we'll be able to come in in time. I feel like certainly the public is ready.
Well, first responders have been engaged along the way as part of that development of the, of the preliminary plan. I don't know how much has been officially communicated to them in terms of the shift.
Yeah.
To dockside. So. Certainly we can invite, we can invite the, the fire chief and the ambulance corps. Captain and Officer Burke next week.
Yeah.
We don't use a lot of information to. In terms of.
On the mountain.
So that was another one of my questions is whether we'll focus our. Our feedback on direct village impacts. With the duck side piece and, and people coming through the village and, you know, there's a lot of questions that we have about. Exactly what it's going to look like. Out by breakneck, but it's not, it's not within our purview. And so that, that might be a good. Scope reminder for our meeting next week that we really want to focus on them. You know, there's still over of understanding the full project. You know, the full project relates to what our impact will be in terms of numbers and, you know, but we really want to put that in the village.
Yeah, and I think we need to make sure that public comment stays focused on the, on the areas that are within our purview because they're looking for comment on the impacts that are particular.
Yeah.
To the village from us.
That's from the planning board. Are the other boards aware that they are being drawn into?
Yes, I did. We did communicate with them. I don't know, I asked the chairs to invite. Membership, heard back from. One. The vice chair of HDRB, he's away. I'm hoping that they will send someone. I'm hoping that zoning board will send someone as well and we can do a follow up. Invite.
Yeah, when you think of, it's has gone on for something like eight years. And it has morphed and so there's, you just have to morph it a little more.
I mean, as you would expect, a project to develop over time. Okay. Anything else on that topic? Anything you want communicated to the planning board tomorrow? Okay. Thanks. Sorry.
I'm looking forward to that.
I am too, actually. And I think just from a very practical standpoint. There's a lot of ways to fit in this room. One option is them up here, but that feels very confrontational to me. We could. We have to leave space for the public, but maybe we put planning board here and us up here. Normally we would, in, in years past, we would ship to the firehouse for big meetings like this, but our ability to be, to broadcast live is here. So we need to hold a meeting here. So I guess I would say to the public, you are very welcome to join us, but if you have the capacity to join us via Zoom. That would help us space wise and maybe we can see where we are. On the fly that night and. Shift around a bit. Okay. So last week when we were together, I gave you. I told you about a letter of intent having been submitted by me and by the executive director at the hub. For a grant from a letter of intent to apply for a grant from the community foundations. For our. Is there another meeting happening tonight? Got it. For our collaboration between the police department and the hub. And I shared that letter of intent with you last week and we asked to table. Approval to. Concede with actually making the grant. So any discussion based on what you read?
Yeah, it's great. Yeah. So I wouldn't create it to the applications.
Yeah, and I think, I think that the, my sense from the, from the community foundation books that we've talked with initially is that they're excited about it too. So fingers crossed. I would.
Apply for the community foundation grant.
Motion, I guess the motion authorized, authorized the mayor to work with the hub to apply. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eliza just said aye. Okay. Mayor's Park. So Eliza revised. Draft. Rules to consolidate signs. In the meantime, I spent some time looking into the code. They bring those notes with me. I did not, but I think I can remember everything.
Do you want the email?
Yeah, that'd be great, actually. The. The code. The chapter of the code that relates to. Parks is the, is the recreation commission. Thank you. The recreation commission chapter. And in looking at it, Eliza's correct, there, there's no identification of Mayor's Park. As, as for residents only, except in the portion relating to permits. So if you're a villager or a town resident. You have a four week lead time to turn in your application. If you are not a resident of either the town or the village, you have eight weeks to turn it in. But beyond that. There is no identification of it as a. Residents only park. So. You know, the, the, the recognition of Mayor's Park as a resident park is, I think, a tradition. On the part of the rec commission and villagers broadly, but it's not supported by the ordinance. So I think that Eliza's proposal to identify Mayor's Park as a community park is a good compromise. Any thoughts on that in particular?
No, I like the sign.
Okay. And there are also no existing rules indicated in the code for Mayor's Park or any other park. And the, it's important to note that our chapter on recreation. Does not cover dockside. Dockside is covered under a separate agreement with New York State parks. It is their park and we are the identified managers of the village of the park. So all of the references in that chapter are Mayor's Park, waterfront park, meaning. People call it also river, river, riverfront park from the boat club to the private property, including the dock. And then McConville Park where the top park is. So the only rule that's laid out is time. And we had been talking in concept about dawn to dusk and the code. Indicates Mayor's Park, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, March 1st to December 31st. I also sent this communication to the rec commission, their meeting concurrently with us. They're up in the firehouse right now. So my, that would suggest that the park is meant to be closed in January and February under the code. I, I have never seen the park closed in January and February. I don't, I don't think that's the intention. I've asked the rec commission if they are aware of their intent and intention of closing. I don't see any reason to close, to have the park closed in January and, and February myself. Thoughts? I mean, it's a great, it's one of the flat spots you can practice cross country scheme. So to make, make a change in the time. And. The season, when the park can be open, if we really leave it open all year, that requires. A code change. Which is not a difficult code change. You know, we had a code change last week relating to. This, what we're doing right now, remote meetings and we, it was no big whoop. So. I would like to schedule a public hearing. On that topic to change, to change the hours in all of the parks and be consistent from dawn to dusk. Does that seem like a reasonable?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Talking about having a public hearing to change the code?
Yes.
All right, well, we need like.
We need language before we can schedule it. Exactly. Yes. I'm, I'm laying it out as a concept first tonight. And then we need to develop it. And once we have it and have approved language, then we schedule a public hearing. But I don't see it as being. A heavy lift. It's in one section. It's section 20, what is it? 27. 27, eight related to time, to times. There's also not a discussion on dogs as we come to the next. Topic of our consideration. There's not a, a discussion on dogs in the rec chapter, only in the dog chapter. There is a dog chapter, which is chapter 45. Which. Identifies for all across the village, licenses being required for dogs in the village as well as leashes. And dockside also, the state parks do require dogs on leads of at least six feet. I know that dockside has sort of become evolved into a place where people have their dogs off leash. This actually isn't allowable by the parks and you can be fined by, we do have a, we do have a. An animal control. an animal control officer. So it, it has been used in that way. It should not be used in that way. If we want dogs off leash, it's a different conversation regarding a dog run. And it, you know, that may be a good conversation to have. It may be, it may be time and there may be interest. And if that is something that the community is interested in, it's something that someone should propose. But for now, the village code requires that dogs in, anywhere in the village are on leash, as does the state park. So I think we should be consistent across the parks in terms of requiring leashes. There had been, there is currently as a result of sort of a creative attempt to control geese in Mayor's Park, a permit that allows dogs to be off leash in Mayor's Park. Jeff, I think you said twenty, maybe twenty people apply on an annual basis. And I, and our discussion last week, the deputy mayor and others, I think, felt that this was a permitting process that we didn't necessarily need to have. There are certainly plenty of times that there are no dogs on leash, are off leash in the park and we, the geese are still there. I guess we won't know. We won't know until we, until we try. So the question to the board is, as we consider, as we consider how we're going to communicate rules in the park, we need to make a decision about whether in fact you do want to rescind that policy requiring a permit and allowing dogs off leash with that permit.
I mean, personally, I think the permit is kind of silly. I mean, it just seems like, I mean, clearly by the twenty people who actually get a permit versus probably thousands of people have in the village. I'm guessing there's a lot of people who take advantage of this facility without, without permit. I do think because it is not a dog run, I think dogs should be on a leash. So I don't see, to me, I think you can have a requirement for dogs to be, to be leashed and, but not to need a permit to get into that, inside that.
It's not to get in, it's to take your dog off leash.
Because then de facto, then that, that will become, that will become a dog run if if we.
I mean, it hasn't, I think, I think where we see the most traffic with dogs, especially running, running loose, is at Dockside where it's expressly prohibited by New York State.
Right.
They are, were we supposed to fully start or do they do this?
Well, among our next discussion is, we are, we are being asked to provide doc, what rules we, we would like on the sign that they're installing. So we'll, we'll come back to that. But of the existing rules for Dockside, both by the state and laid out, this is why I printed out the Dockside Park user guide. Because it's laid out, it's laid out really clearly. The dogs have to be on a six foot lead, lead, which is consistent with the state requirement.
I mean, so we should just, again, let's try to be consistent.
Yep.
You don't need a permit to take it off the leash because you can't take it off the leash.
Right.
It's a six foot leash lead anywhere in the village.
And Bruno Park. I'm certainly open to the concept of a dog run.
Right.
It's something that needs to be community driven and a proposal needs to come forward from members of the public. But for now, we have to, we have to go with code we have. So tonight, if that's the direction we want to go, we should vote to rescind that previous permitting process.
Well, the other piece of that too, just to play devil's advocate for a second, is like, we're, it's not like we're enforcing that. Right? There's not regular enforcement of people in there with or without a permit.
We're talking about Mayor's Park or Dockside?
Mayor's Park.
No.
Right. As, I mean, has anybody ever been?
The animal control officer will periodically patrol, but she's, she gets called into engagements much more frequently at Dockside or witnesses than herself.
Which is expressly no.
Expressly no, no off leash.
And if we have something that says they can, they have to be on a leash and someone is letting their dog off leash and that dog hurts somebody. Does that mitigate our liability because?
Well, right now, there are no signs posted at Dockside. There are at Mayor's Park. And there is, there is at the waterfront, says no dog walking at all on the dock. There is a sign there. That's not reflected in the code, in the dog code, but there is a sign that says no dog walk, dog walking at the riverfront. That's another place where I think dogs on leads, if they're on leads, it's a different story. And I don't know what the origin of that sign is, but it's there.
I've seen more.
The animal. The animal control officer did come in, you'll remember this, when we were working on that chapter last year, she did come in and specifically request that clear signage be installed in the park so that she had more capacity to enforce, to say, look, it says right here, no dogs off lead. So that's, that's an element of the, of the consideration for Dockside as well.
I, I feel I think people probably really depend on some of these places, like their dogs. Like dogs have a lot of energy and, and there's probably a community belief that it's allowed at Dockside, you know, current practice.
Right. And because there hasn't been signage.
Yeah, because, well, yeah, because there hasn't been signage and, and because of like, we're doing it. So it does feel like then we're closing off both options at the same time without any plans for an alternative. And and I, and I would love then for people to, for residents to propose a dog park, but it'll take a while. So
Yeah, I just think if the, well, so the flip side of that is if you are in compliance at Dockside and you want to have your dog off lead at Mayor's Park, right now you need to come in to get a permit.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
It's not a big deal. It takes less than five minutes.
The upside of that is that it creates kind of a legal path for managing this. And then, I mean, I, I with the idea, and maybe with the, this isn't forever encourage dog owners to, to look into creating a real dog park.
So maybe the modification that we consider for the sign is dogs, pets off leash by permit only.
And keep the permit.
And keep the permit. And then that does give you a path to.
Yeah. And also, I mean, in fairness, we should probably, this has come up because of this sign. It seems like there's a bigger issue or, or something that needs to be tackled about dogs, that finding a place where dogs can be free to be their doggy selves. And, and it's a safe space for, for, you know, the community. So maybe, maybe we need to sort of tease it out a little bit and have like more conversation about that.
To Laura's point, leaving, leaving that the capacity at Mayor's Park for now creates an alternative. We do have to proceed with the signage at Dockside because the project is wrapping up and state, the state is asking us for confirmation of the rules that are going to be posted, and that's one of theirs. We don't have an option on. So I, I think that's a reasonable, I, I think that's a reasonable argument. Eliza, I can't, I don't have my glasses on. Do you have thoughts?
Yeah, I have a question. So are we responsible for the signage at Dockside or do we give them our, you know, like rules to put on their sign? How does that work?
So there is an established set of rules at Dockside that is published, was published by Parks and the Village together after the agreement in two thousand eighteen. I was handing them out this evening. I'm sorry, you don't have it. It's, it's on the village website if you want to look at it at home. On page four, it has general rules and regulations. So these are established. We're not going to resolve this tonight, but my, my point in having this on the agenda tonight is after we were, after we talk about Dockside a bit to say, these are the existing rules. Is this the format in which we want them to be on the sign? Do we want to tweak language for the sign? That's in keeping with kind of the, the outlook we're trying to establish on the, on the Mayor's Park sign.
And do we have influence, like, you know, we had discussed designing signage that looks kind of cohesive and like, those together? Do we have?
So in that case, at, at Dockside, we are required to follow the state's design guidelines. So they are producing the sign, it's being done with their PMS colors, their fonts, et cetera. And it will, it will say this is a New York State park under the management of the Village of Cold Spring or some version of that language. And then from there, the rules are, are laid out. And, you know, it's a lot more rules than, than we've talked about for Dockside, but I mean, for Mayor's Park, but it, they're important ones. No open campfires. As we, when we go through pictures, are you comfortable, can we switch, bounce back and forth a little bit for a moment and I'll walk you through Dockside? Among them are open campfires, barbecuing up by, it's permitted using grills only, no amplified music, no alcoholic beverages. And a lot of these things are stipulated in the two thousand eighteen agreement between the state and the village. So some, we don't have a huge amount of flexibility. Where we have flexibility is in the language that's used. But the concepts need to be there. So maybe let's pause for a second. We're, we're jumping a little bit, but these things are interconnected. Let's pause for a second and go, if we could go up to the pictures at Dockside. Yesterday, Bugsy and I met on site for a final construction draw, a final construction meeting with the landscape architect, the design engineer, the, let's see, a couple of folks from Parks, including Evan, Evan from, Evan Thompson from Hudson Highlands. And we had a look at the site, identified what had changed, what was outstanding, and where to go from here. There's a week left on the, well, the, the contractor's contract goes until this Sunday, so they have a week to do sort of cleanup work, punch list work. This is at the entrance. And to tell you some of the things I learned yesterday, right about where that pine tree is, you can sort of see the sign. There will be a gate that State Parks is providing. They also are providing a split rail fence along the edge to separate the private property that is belongs to Ms. Bergman at that house at the entrance. So it will be clear that that is not part of the park. And I think that she, they, the Parks, Parks have had conversations with her. I think, I think that she's, my perception is that she's quite relieved by that, knowing that. So if we go to the next image. And that is also where the, where the, where this sign will be that we're talking about. It's a, it's a two-part sign that will be on the fence that has, you know, what is Dockside? What's happening here? Sort of a history of the site and a description of what a sustainable shoreline, what a sustainable shoreline is and what this project aims to achieve. And then our, our rules. So you get to see an edge, edge of the, of the shoreline, the, the benches are all in, the plantings are all done. The plantings are fragile. There is not currently plans to water. It is meant to be a landscape that survives regardless of condition. What survives, survives. They do have a guarantee on the trees. It's a hard time to be planting trees because of the drought. Luckily, we had some rain this week and the trees looked to be perking up a bit, but Parks said that the vendor they work with, if the trees don't make it through the winter, they'll replace them in the spring. So the area that you'll see now is, is, that's looking muddy will be, will be sort of a, a low meadow area of, of natives coming off the rocks up to the pathway. And then beyond the pathway will be grass. If you go to the next. Feels like an art history class. There's a view from, from the roadway looking out toward Storm King. And then you get a sense of how the trees will fill in. And the next.
Great sky.
It was beautiful yesterday.
We're going to get rain tomorrow for the trees.
Yes, and we're going to get more rain and it's going to start cooling off. Something that I, I thought was really fun and it was, you know, it was one thing to see it in a drawing, it's another thing to see it in real life, that they want this to look like a shoreline that gets inundated and drops things like driftwood. So right now, the driftwood that's there is sort of placed artistically. But they don't anticipate that it will stay. That the river will take back some of it and will leave us other pieces. So this will be an ever-changing shoreline. So to the left, again, to the left of the, of the pathway will be the sort of field, field plants and to the right will be grass. And the, the grass seed is all in place. We, there will be, there was discussion of the installation of fencing to allow the grass to establish. That was in the conversation said to be left to the village. I said, we don't, that's not something we have budget for or we anticipated. And we need our highway crew to be doing roadwork. So they're going to report back to me, hoping that they take the responsibility of finishing this out. I think everybody wants to see, everybody wants to see the grass grow and thrive. This is the, the boat pull-up area. At the end, they left the original piles in from the docks that were there. And then this is a concrete, if you imagine what's the, the textured area that's on the entrance, on the, on the entrance to sidewalks for ADA texture. It's kind of like that, but concrete. And it's not, it is not envisioned as a boat launch, but a boat pull-up. The rules, as you'll look, said kayak, rowboat, canoe, and similar craft may be launched if carried in. If trailer drop off is needed, a permit must be obtained. And I think we need to have some conversation about that. There will be no, there will be no vehicle access on the site. I don't know what the origin of that is, and it may be something that we need to speak to previous trustees about, but the, the Dock, Parks does not want any vehicles on the site other than emergency and maintenance vehicles, which is why they're providing a gate. Okay. And then toward the end, this is stepping back further on, to the right in the image, you see the, the turnaround of the existing gravel road that has always been there for maintenance and emergency vehicles. Beyond it, as you look toward Bull Hill, you'll see a gray area that's kind of outlined in rock. That is, that is the connector. That is where the, the Fjord Trail will connect. That area, when we walked up it yesterday, it just ended and dropped off, I don't know, eight, ten feet down to a mass of Japanese knotweed. So we had all of this, all of these natives on this side of that line and then a drop off to knotweed. And it also looked like a perfect invitation to tumble down the hill and see what you can find in the woods. And it's right by the railroad track. So I was pleased that Parks was very responsive. I asked that there be something done to indicate an edge of the park, an end to the park. Obviously, it's not going to stop people from walking through there, but it gives a visual cue. They added, when I went down this afternoon and took these pictures, they had put these boulders in place to frame an edge of that. When it grows in, there's potential for it to be very beautiful and look like a swale and a nice place to sit and view the river. Right now, it looks like an unfinished roadway. So we'll have to sort of see how it goes as it grows.
No question.
Yeah.
Where's the Fjord Trail trips into all of this?
That is yet unclear. And that is part of what we hope to, to learn more about in the draft environmental impact statement.
And we're supposed to take care of all this as they.
So right now, the agreement that we have with Parks between, that's what it looks like at the top. There are two logs there that are sort of like sitting benches. Right now, there is an agreement between the village and Parks that expires, a ten-year agreement, it will expire in two thousand twenty-eight that has the village responsible for the maintenance of all aspects of the park. It did ask yesterday for, Bugsy was on site to get some basic training. This is designed to require very little care. It's designed to be natives that they make it great, and if they don't, they don't. But there will be, over time, there will need to be attention to invasives that creep in. And I was sort of surprised when, when the landscape architect said, you know, remember that, that other site where we had Japanese hops get brought in in the soil. We have a concern that the top soil may have that here. So if we are responsible for it, we have talked about, and actually, a, a village resident has shown interest in stepping up to form a Friends of, of Dockside to assist in that process. My request to Evan Thompson yesterday, and he was super amenable to it, was, let's get a group of volunteers together sooner rather than later, so they learn right from the beginning. let's get a group of volunteers together sooner rather than later, so they learn right from the beginning, familiarize themselves with the plants and what they're looking at and looking for, and can be trained. Um, so at this stage, what is required of the village and the Roadways and Facilities crew in particular is mowing the lawn when it grows in, the grassy area in the center, and then up this knoll. Um, and the gravel, maintaining the gravel path. It's a, I think they call it a rock powder. It's got a, that, that walkway around the edge of the park has um, an item for base that's, I don't know, I think they said about a foot deep, and then three or four inches of pebbles. Um, and over time, they will get, they will get walked to the sides, so we'll need to, to rake periodically and add, add additional. Um, and then the plants are meant to be, to be left to their own devices along the shoreline. So, this helps to explain some of the logic, and it is entirely coincidental that we were talking about Mayor's Park rules and that we got this request yesterday. Um, but it works well that they're coming through, because I think the point you raised about considering the leash, off-leash option at the same time is helpful.
And are we responsible for enforcement of that list of?
Yeah.
That's on our
Yes, so I, you may not have gotten a copy, let's make sure that Laura has a copy of the two thousand eighteen agreement between the village and the So to finish that thought, that agreement expires, and Linda Cooper, who's the head of, the head of Parks for the Taconic Region, in her, in her view, she anticipates that by twenty, you know, Fjord Trail's not gonna move fast, and that by twenty twenty-seven, when this is beginning to expire, we'll have a better sense of what could conceivably continue in village care and what cannot. Because obviously, if the Fjord Trail comes through this park, it completely transforms the use of this park. Right, right now, it's a, it's a reasonably local park, except on the weekends. Um, with reasonably local uses, like people carrying their kayaks in from the neighborhood and, and having the dogs play. That agreement does restrict things like, you know, we can, we can have, we can earn income via concession, by events with permission from the state, et cetera. So we can begin, once, once the landscape stabilizes and can take heavier traffic of events, this is another place that can be rented out for weddings, et cetera. Um, but any, any construction on the site, any, any structures of any kind have to be approved by the straight state park first. So you, you know, you might think about something like a dog run or a bocce, I don't know, a bocce court or a kayak rack or any of those things would need to, if the, the village expressed interest in them. Um, and those are some of the things that got called out in the, in the comprehensive plan as well. If we were to proceed with them, the state needs to approve them because it's their property and it's stipulated in our agreement. Okay, so, given all that, coming back to, um, to, um, we do, we do wanna consolidate the signage at Mayor's Park. So it sounds that in consideration of all the things we've talked about and it's compromised, maybe it makes sense to say dogs on leash, dogs off-leash by permit only.
Pets for dogs.
What other pets would be?
You never know.
Wana? I have five minutes saying pets.
People have pet pigs.
That's true.
No way. I said my cat have a leash, but I don't think he
I had a leash on that term, I did.
Rose tried to run out with three of them.
Okay, so
We're democratic.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing that I note from the, from Dockside, Dockside rules that maybe, um, it says to do, to do, um, that garbage
Oh yeah.
Uh, it says Dockside is a carry-in, carry-out park. There are no dumpsters available, blah, blah, blah. I kinda like that, the carry-in, carry-out. I mean, it's the same thing, it's please carry Josh out, but I like the concept of like
It's a known concept, carry.
Yeah, yes. Um, so I don't know, we wanna change that.
Just stuff.
And again, we can't, because the code specifies time, we can't hang on stuff until that right, change is made in the code. So, which is why I'm suggesting that we focus in on not only the sign, but Eliza, do you wanna take the lead on, on revising that section, twenty-seven dash eight?
Sure.
Um, you, you have capacity to take that on right now, or do you need to hand it off? So you, I know you're also working on Main Street stuff.
Y- yeah, I've, I've got a bunch of projects on my plate, because I'm also working on the zoning code for STR.
Right, so can someone else take on that piece? It's very minor.
The language.
Yeah, the language. Okay, you'll do that? Okay. So, so next time we're together, we can look at the revised draft, think about impact signage, and decide if we want to schedule a public hearing on, on that. Change.
Um, just
Can you correct Jeff? We have to do a secret finding before we do a code change. Sorry, Eliza?
Oh, brother man.
It's not complicated. So, sorry, Eliza, what did you say?
And just to clarify for anybody who's looking at the Mayor's Park signage, that's not like a design, it's just the verbiage that we're
Right, 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 right. The suggestions I had after look, got some time away from it, looking at it again, is, um, take out periods. Who could, um, carry and carry out pets off-leash only by permit. Clean up after your pets. Please. And then clerk, the C in village clerk should be
Always.
Capitalize, always, and then with a little crown on top of the C. Also, pausing for a moment to say thank you to Jeff, because at three o'clock, I thought, oh, that's, would be, be a great idea if we could have some pictures to look at tonight, and he accommodated me by getting it online, so we could have it to look at. Don't usually have show and tell on screen, so thank you very much for doing that late in the day.
That's why he was sitting out on the bench.
Yes, exactly, and I told you I wanted to grab my throw, yeah. Um, so we'll have to table this again.
Yeah.
Some off-the-table.
Yes, rescinding dog permits is is, uh, tabled or delayed and signage is tables. We've had the discussion on Dockside. Um, I don't wanna edit by committee in a live meeting, but now you have the rules and regulations that exist. Um, if people wanna comment, I sent them around electronically this afternoon, if you wanna make recommended language changes. Um, and we do have to run it, obviously run it by states, by the state. But we need to turn it around fairly quickly so that, um, they can make, make the sign, and we want the sign up soon rather than later. Um, I would like to, Jeff, if you would, um, do you know what the genesis of these stapling or nailing items to trees or structures or defacing in any way is strictly forbidden? I mean, I understand the logic of why we wanna, you don't want people nailing things on trees, but was it a problem before?
Looks like
Not that I'm aware of. I'm gonna guess that it was part of, it was probably in the agreement.
There is not, I read the agreement today. There isn't a reference to that in the agreement, so I guess we, if we can try to figure out what the origin of that is.
That might be there. That might be St. Park.
I don't think it is. So I'll, I'll, I'll call, um, I can't think of his name right now, Dan Seymour, who's, who's the designer working on it and find out. Okay. So no determinations to make, just bringing it to your attention for your review.
Okay.
Uh, any other Mayor's Park or Dockside discussion?
Eliza?
Okay. Thank you very much for taking the lead on the Mayor's Park signage, Eliza.
No problem.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So if we keep promoting at Mayor's Parks, I mean, can we have, maybe
Well, dogs
seeing this?
Well, the state allows dogs on lead. Um,
But all, not at all, they don't allow
They do not allow dogs off the lead at all.
Okay. Good question.
Okay. It's just, it's not used that way, and it hasn't been enforced. Um, creating signage in conjunction with states will make it, with the state will make it easier to enforce for the animal control officer and the officers on duty, police officers on duty. And to Laura's point, we create an option, we, we leave an option open at Mayor's Park.
I do, you know, I'm thinking about whether this must have that option.
Yeah, there is a, there is a town dog run out near, um, what's the name of that development? Glassbury Court. It's a long way to go, to get in the car and drive your dog out there to run. I think it'd be great if we could create that, that amenity in our village parks in some way. Okay, um, next is, um, I believe that Tweets has a motion regarding a member of the recognition.
Yes.
She was recommended, Leslie Holder, she was recommended by the recognition.
That's right.
Um, and, uh, so I would like to make a motion to, um, appoint Leslie Holder as, as the new member to the recognition.
In second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Excellent.
Okay, right, okay, and none opposed. Thank you very much for stepping forward, Leslie. Now, one more little show and tell here. So, we have, this is West Street, standing at the, at the foot of Maine, looking toward the boat club. There is an anonymous donor who inquired about repairing or replacing the fence that sits right there where Jeff has his pointer. The fence was probably installed in the early nineties, it matches, oops. It matches the fences that are around the top park and along the cemetery on Mountain Avenue next to the school. It is in disrepair. You, I tried to get a photograph to show you how it's leaning. Oop, can you stay there for a second? Can you go back one? Please, thank you. Uh, so it is, it is leaning, some of the posts have rotted. Um, and then in the next image, you'll see that some of the spindles are broken. Um, so this donor is willing to either repair it or replace it. Um, I reached out to, we are, as a village entity, we are, I mean, as a municipal entity, we're not required to go through um, land use review and permitting process, but, um, I think it's important for us to, to hear our boards. Um, I did send this to the HDRB as sort of a, what do you think? And I sent it also to the Tree Advisory Board and to Bugsy as head of Roadways and Facilities. Um, HRB has not met, so I haven't heard back from them yet. Yeah, if you go down one more image, this was an issue of concern raised by Jen Swarick. So that is not one of the cherry trees, that's one of the maples, but you'll see how its roots are girdling around the uh, posts. And then at the other end, we do have the fantastic cherry trees that will continue to grow and reach, and she is concerned about protecting the root and creating space for them. Her suggestion was, what if we just took the fence down? So, I did talk to Bugsy about that, and Bugsy said that you'd be thrilled if the fence came down because it's a pain to take care of. Um, the weed whacking and the repairs, and in, not for nothing, there has, there have been a couple of members of the public who've written in um, and talked about how hard it is to get out of the passenger seat, um, in the cars there. So, um, I think ultimately, as a person who does maintenance, that a lot of this is up to Bugsy, but I'm putting that out to you for, for consideration, looking for feedback. How would you feel about taking that fence down? And then I would imagine you'd wanna take the fence down on the other side across from Lulu, so it would also allow for different placement of garbage cans.
Can you scroll back up so we can just have like a better bird's eye view of it?
To which one?
The first one, I think, yeah, the, the next one up.
It allows people, no, easier passage.
You have more opportunities to get to the river.
Yeah.
And also, it, I mean, I was looking at it today, and I hadn't ever really thought about it, but it, it would create a, such an open view on the river.
And it kinda, it, like, if you just move down the lane, you know, it all starts to look a little bit more, conceptually, a little bit more connected.
Well, and the basis for this, for this anonymous donor coming forward was I don't wanna, I don't wanna look at this wreck of a fence anymore. I, it's in my view to the river, right? Um, and that's not, that's not wrong. Um, but here we have an opportunity to simplify maintenance for Bugsy and his team by taking it down.
The only downside, I suppose, is that it means that people will walk through the grass in all different ways and they could tumble the grass. Like, there's probably places, right, right?
Blankets on the grass.
Yeah. I suppose you could say another concern would be, kids are gonna run out from the grass into the street, or people will come out from the grass into the street. I mean, there are
You can also run right into the water.
You have to run right into the water, so I don't, I don't necessarily see that as a I think we have to trust that people aren't stupid. Um, well, oh, well, a little bit, trust a little bit that people aren't stupid.
I trust Bugsy.
I agree.
Eliza?
Um, I am all for less maintenance. I am very familiar with how much work maintaining a wooden fence is. And I highly recommend taking it down. Say, I would rather a plastic fence of some, you know, le, more, less maintenance heavy, but I'd say take it down just for the cost of the village and the labor that it takes to keep it looking nice.
That's the challenge here, that it is in the district. Um, and the HDRB has become more open to composite material. I don't know how they would feel about a run of composite material right on the waterfront. Um, and it's obviously not, it's not an historic fence. It was, it was added not so long ago.
Yeah.
Um, so Jeff, do we need a vote on this?
No.
Why not?
Okay. So,
I'd like to make
Go ahead, please.
That we remove the fencing along
Riverfront Park, Waterfront Park.
Waterfront Park, the entire length.
Second. Eliza, second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Done, so I will follow up. Thank you for that discussion. Ooh, I popped my beret. That doesn't happen very often. Okay, um,
The fun topic.
The fun topic, Main Street bathrooms. So, here's where we are with this. We have worked very hard to keep them open all summer. We have managed to keep them open all summer. We've had a hard time maintaining labor to do it. Um, and it's fallen back on the highway, the Roadways and the So These Guys, the Highway Department. Um, have them come in on a Saturday and a Sunday is the time and a half on Saturday, double time on Sunday. It's pricey, um, we're way over budget. Um, for bathroom labor for the year, and we're in quarter one. Um, I has, asked Michelle to look at projections for what the labor costs would be if we were to continue. Like, let's assume we can't, we, we still struggle getting someone, and we're still relying on our, our highway guys. Um, it's about eighty-five hundred dollars through the fiscal year, which we just don't have. Um, and also, I wanna advocate strongly that the highway guys need their Saturdays and Sundays, and they work outside all week in their beat. So we're, we're at a what can we say, that terrible, and we're at an inflection point with the bathroom, we have to make a decision about the bathroom. Um, and keeping them open, and I wish, I wish we had the money to keep them open every day all year. Um, I sincerely do, but we don't.
Yeah, I mean, I there's so many, there's so, there's so many issues with these bathrooms. Um, the amount of time that we spent talking about the bathrooms, the amount of money that we are spending on the facility, keeping them up, keeping them clean, keeping them working, the fact that we pay these guys on their weekends to be working and cleaning them, I think is really, like, that to me is just like, that's where I absolutely just feel like we have to draw the line, and it's just it's just not right.
It's never been our first choice, and we did, we did have someone hired for a number of weeks um, and lost them.
Right.
So, and then lost someone else, they lost, lost that person again, so and again.
And, oh, maybe again, yeah. Um, to pay, you know, a company to maintain them, it's also out of the budget fundamentally. I mean, I just think that, like, we've come to a place where it's
We need partnership.
It's also out of the budget fundamentally. I mean, I just think that like, we've come to a place where it's, we need partnership. We need, either, either we need, we need partnership or the, I, I would move to close the bathrooms on the weekends until. And if there is a time that they can be maintained with, with funding from another source, because at this point, we can't do it. And so, I mean, that's, I've.
That's where you are?
That's a hundred percent where I am. I just, I just don't think this is, this is, this is an unmanageable situation. And I think at this point, taxpayers paying. For this, um, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a wonderful, it's, if we could afford it, I agree, like, yes, no question, but we can't. So.
My partnership is always my default way to get things done. And um, you know, whether it, I, I mean, in a conversation this morning with the Main Street Group. Uh, partnership and sponsorship was brought up. So um, you know, I mean, going forward. That's got to be a part of the solution. It can't rest on village taxpayer's shoulders. So um, like to continue to have a conversation with them.
I mean, it would be fantastic.
Through Main Street Group or whether it's through the chamber, whatever entity had the ability to raise sponsorship.
Or the contract.
Or, and, and, no, and, get, because even if they raise the money. Our guys, village guys need to rejuvenate themselves on the weekend. They need their downtime. Can't ask people to work seven days a week, that's insanity.
Yeah, well, and, and the other reality is, they have, they have generously come in every weekend. They don't have to say yes. Um, and, and so we are, it is always, it is always a fragile situation because, you know, one of them could have a sick kid or whatever it is and say, I, you know. I'm not, I'm not coming in, or I just don't want to come in this weekend. And I can't force someone to come in to clean bathrooms. But just for you. Had you raised your hand?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I don't think the village ever envisioned to be paying the highway department their weekend to do this. And I.
That's right.
Think that we ever would have made this decision from the start, you know, like, this is not planning, this is emergency backup. That has right its course. Um, so at this point, um. You know. We're, we're at the point where we have to make a tough decision and, and we need some help because A, we don't have any other laborers. They're just aren't, we couldn't even hire someone if we wanted to at this point. And I have worked on this issue for five years. From different seats in my bathroom career.
It is kind of a career at this point.
Most Campbell was cleaning them, if you remember.
No, um, so, so I think that in, in the past, we've worked in partnership with the chamber. And the Main Street merchants do realize the, the value and, and the asset of having them open. And, and, and I think, you know, they're the ones who are going to be asked for their bathrooms when the bathrooms close. And it's not just customers, it's hikers, it's, it's everybody walking through the village. It's not, you know. But it will impact the merchants when, if and when the bathrooms get closed on weekends. So um, yeah, Catherine and I reached out to the Main Street Committee. Uh, they seemed pretty uh. Open to the idea. Uh, I've reached out to the chamber to see if they can and are willing to partner with. Um, this to solve the problem. And I, I think that we may be able to work something out. They seem. Somewhat open to it. So I think, you know, they can't make this decision in six hours, which was, you know, they didn't have a lot of time to consider it. And the board needs to discuss it and come back to us.
Sure.
Um, once they've had that opportunity, I think that there may be a solution that we are all working together on that.
That's great. I'm glad to hear it.
Problem that gets us to the end of the year. Come next year, I think we need to come up with a real solution from the village or a different idea of how we're doing bathrooms. But um, we don't have to talk about that now.
Um, well, just, so to that point, um, is there, that's. Great that there's, that there's interest in, in partnership or some sort of hybrid, some sort of solution. My concern is, this is a now decision. I mean, I appreciate. You know, that maybe they, someone or people may feel, you know, thrown off guard by this, but the truth of the matter is like. We have no one to maintain it this weekend. So this is a decision, we need to either come up with something like in the next. You know, thirty six hours. Or they're closed on Friday. Closed on Friday. I mean, that's.
The only upside, the only upside right now is that the Sea Streak, there, there is an option. No one likes them, but there is an option. The, the porta potties are in place at the riverfront for um, intended for use by Sea Streak. We can put signs on the bathrooms directing people there. At least there's a toilet. I mean, it's not, it's not glamorous. But there's an option. For this weekend.
I think at some point, we just have to call it and it sounds like.
Yes, today's the day.
I think we're at that, yeah, it's, it's terrible, but that's, I mean, we've been kicking this can down the road. We've made it clear at multiple points that this was. A not sustainable situation and. And now we're here and this is not where we want it to be, but, but we don't, I don't see any other option. And I, and I don't think it's right to ask the guys to come in. On Saturday or something.
Go ahead.
We cannot afford them, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Sure.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Catherine is, is pointing out that there are, I'm not sure which Fran that is, but at least Erin Murphy from the chamber is on. I mean, ultimately, this is the board's decision to make, but is there, did you want to make any comment? Okay, um, would you like to make a motion, Tweets?
Sure, um, so it is with a heavy heart that I motion. To uh, close the bathrooms. On the weekends, starting this weekend. Until we have a sustainable financial management. Put in place to manage the bathrooms and the maintenance of the bathrooms moving forward. So they'll be open during the week. They'll be maintained by the village and then Friday to Monday morning or whatever the time is, well, it will be closed.
Well, we, we would keep them open Friday, right?
During the day, Friday.
During the day, Friday. I mean, like, the end of day.
Is what we can't do.
Right. Yes, thank you for clarifying. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
One other question, um, in the past, the visitor center volunteers had filled in. On occasion to clean and restock bathrooms when we were in these kinds of jams. Would that be something that could get us to the interim of the?
If they're willing to do it, they're, they're covered under the village's liability insurance as volunteers. If they wanted to do it, absolutely. I hate to ask anybody to clean a toilet.
I can't. I would have a hard time.
If they want to do it, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm grateful for it and, and I hate, I hate asking.
But I agree, but.
To do something I wouldn't do myself and I, you know, I, I do those things, so I, I don't know. It's okay. If they, if you want to ask them to do, they, listen, they can say yes or no. You, we all know who did it for years, right? Name's on a plaque down there.
Daddy Fatty. It's true.
True, with pride.
Can we amend the motion um, to include that provision i- in the case that um. Visitor Center volunteers are able to fill in in the interim while we look for a better solution, otherwise.
I would say sustain, that's part of a sustainable management. It's free volunteer labor.
Better.
Well, I don't, I don't think it has to be in the motion, is what I'm saying.
Well, how do, how do we, how do we do this? I mean, that, that's kind of like a.
I, I think the, the supervision that Eliza's put forward is fine.
Okay.
They've done it in the past.
Yep.
If there are people who are willing to do it, but, but Eliza, the folks would need to let, need to let Jeff know so that we can make a key available again.
Yep, I will, I will reach out to them and um, get their answer. I can't promise what it will be. It's really up to them, but.
So we have a motion.
Either way.
Excuse me, sorry. We have a motion on the table. We have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
I.
With the amendment. With your amendment.
I.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
We never talk about that.
Well, yeah, except for coming up with, I agree with Eliza, but. When we have like thinking through for next year and finding a, another solution, if, if our short term plan, whatever gets us through the end of the year.
Well, and bear in mind that there are two initiatives in process that will increase revenue, right? Eliza and Catherine are working on Main Street meters. Eliza and the Short Term Rental Committee are working on um, the occupancy tax, working with Michelle. Um, so we have things in place, they'll come. Revenue is not coming as early as we projected when we did the budget. But those sources of revenue that are direct offsets to visitor traffic will help.
Yeah.
We're also, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tense right now because Sea Streak is, and I forgot to announce this at the beginning. Sea Streak is canceling on Friday. Um, so they will only be in town Saturday. Um, and Sunday, Saturday they will be docked at West Point. Sunday, they cannot dock at West Point. This is the only time that West Point is canceled for them for the senior season and they have asked to park. At our dock on Sunday, since they're not going to be there on Friday, they will not be there for two days in a row, so, um, and they won't be there on Saturday. Um, so Sunday would be the only day that they dock in the village. They'll be here Saturday and Sunday, but only docking in the village on Sunday. So we have to be mindful that our projections for revenue from Sea Streak are down as well. And those are like, those are really dire straits. We'll make it work, we'll make it work, but it's, it's uh, it's just real, it's just a reality.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any public comment? Seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
Night, Eliza.
Good night.
Feel better. We spent your birthday.
Yeah, talking about.